So I have one announcement. Since I won't see everybody before this amazing event takes place, Happy Father's Day to all of the dads out there. And in celebration of that, we are having a celebration of fatherhood on June 21st at the Belmont Curb Event Center in the Maddox atrium there. It's free parking, free fun and games for the whole family, and most importantly, free food. And so you can go online to sign up for that. It's called the NFL Alumni Training Camp for Dads. It's on June 21st, 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM. If you go to the, uh, there's a website, thenewlifeprogram.org, newlifeprogram.org. You can get your free tickets for you and your family there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board, uh, School Board District Two.
I don't have any, thank you.
School Board District Three.
Pass.
School Board District Five.
Pass.
School Board District Six.
Just one announcement. Well, two things. Uh, to echo, uh, Board Member Taylor, Happy Father's Day, especially to my hard-headed daddy. Happy Father's Day to all the fathers. And Happy Juneteenth as we get ready to celebrate Freedom Day on June 19th. Happy Juneteenth, everyone. That's all I have.
School Board District Six. Oh, School Board District Seven.
Happy Father's Day, Happy Juneteenth, and especially to Robert, who does a lot of work on fatherhood initiatives. I'd just like to give him a shout out for promoting positive fatherhood. Oh, thank you. And there will be no July meeting, the first meeting in July, oh shit. July 8th, there will not be a school board meeting due to the 4th July holiday, so staff can have a much-needed break.
School Board Mem-, I mean, School Board District Eight. School Board District Nine.
I want to also shout out Happy Pride Month.
And, um, I'm School Board District Four. One announcement, just want to put on your radar and on your calendar, the Back to School Bash, this, uh, will be in the McGavick Cluster on August the 2nd. Um, so just be aware, more information will be coming soon as it relates to that. Also, send a shout out to, uh, Board Member Tyler. She has a birthday coming up on June the 15th. Um, so wishing her a happy birthday. Also wishing Board Member Player right here, today is her birthday and she's working, commitment. So happy birthday to Board Member, Board Chair Player. Um, and, um, also Happy Father's Day and yes, thank you, Robert, for the work that you do around fatherhood. Appreciate it.
And there's chocolate cake over there. So please help yourself, get a nice little sugar high before you go home.
And that will conclude Board announcements.
Cool, okay. I call this meeting to order. Uh, we have a quorum with nine school board members. This is his last board meeting and an honor to serve with him, so he might as well give us a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now you never have to worry, now you're in retirement, about being called for the pledge. And I can call your colleagues. Um, now we, I'll take a motion to, um, approve adoption of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
It has been moved.
Second.
Second, okay, so it's been moved by, um, Member May, second by Vice Chair Nabala Kinney. Um, in discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously, nine to zero. We will now move on to boards and recommendations.
All right, thanks so much, Chair Player. Um, and again, Happy Birthday to you. Uh, we hope you've had a phenomenal day and that you have a great, um, evening. Um, also, good evening to all of our school board members. Um, I'm excited to celebrate some outstanding students tonight, so I'm going to jump right in. Um, first up, I would like to acknowledge, um, William Zong, who is a rising senior at Hume Fog Academic Magnet High School. William, if you are here, can you come on up front? There he is. As William is coming, um, I'd like to acknowledge that he recently earned the Next Generation Scholarship Award and a $1,000 scholarship from the Adventure Science Center for his great volunteer work there. So let me tell you a little bit more about William's work. William has been a key member of the Adventure Science Center's Trash Trackers Committee. Trash Trackers is a monthly cleanup initiative along with the Science Center's, um, border not too far from here, where students collect, sort, and analyze litter to create a dynamic infographic that evolves over time and highlights the real impact of pollution on our environment. Now, William went a step further. He created an interactive website from scratch that allowed the group to map where trash was being collected during cleanups. And Science Center leaders say his initiative brought a new level of engagement to the project. William spent more than 20 hours outside last summer working on cleanups. And William has contributed more than 100 volunteer hours overall since joining the Science Center's Youth Leadership Group two years ago. And he frequently helps the staff troubleshoot technology issues, including fixing the M-BOB robots. He has also been a star for Hume Fog in math and robotics competitions, Science Olympiad, Quizbo, and more. Um, I think William remembers this, I was there the night, um, he was honored by the Adventure Science Center, um, it was about a month ago, and I was so proud when I heard his name and his school being acknowledged. So tonight, William, we wanted to take an opportunity to say congratulations to you on this great honor, um, and we are so proud of how you represent not only yourself and your family, um, but the Hume Fog Academic Magnet community. Let's give it up again for William. Thank you. Congratulations again to William. Um, but believe it or not, he is not the only Hume Fog star we're going to recognize tonight, not by a long shot. The Hume Fog Boys Tennis Team made history three weeks ago. They did something that no other Nashville Public Schools Boys Tennis Team had done in the previous 85 years. Blue Knights, why don't you come on up front so this audience can see you and celebrate you as you journey to the front? And they always just look so coordinated, I love it. So that's right, by defeating Science Hill High School on the afternoon of May 21st, the Blue Knights won the T double S double A Class Double A Boys Tennis State Championship. This is the first time a boys tennis team from our district has won a state title since 1940. But I have a feeling we won't have to wait anywhere close to that long again because Hume Fog is built for more success. This was a beautiful display of skill, tenacity, resilience, and teamwork by a hard-working group of student athletes who joined our long list of state champions in the 24-25 school year. Thank you all for representing Hume Fog and all of MNPS so well, both on and off the co-, off the court. Um, congratulations to Coach Morgan Parker, Principal Kelly Hargis, and all the players and your families on this wonderful achievement. We are super, super proud, um, of you all. And Blue Knights, y'all just keep going and keep, um, just showing up and showing out in the ways that you do. Congratulations. All right, Hume Fog Blue Knights, don't you go too far. I need one of you to stay up here, and that is Elliott Parker. You come on back to the front. Again, congratulations to the entire Hume Fog Boys Tennis Team. Um, Elliott, thank you for joining us up front again. Um, you see, the day after he and his teammates won the state championship, Elliott went to Hume Fog for the last day of exams. He took his Spanish final, then he headed back to Murfreesboro to continue competing in the Boys Class Double A Singles Tournament. Elliott won his quarterfinal and semifinal matches that day, and then he returned the next day for the final. And we all know what happened there. Elliott came from behind to win a thrilling three-set match and win the state boys single championship. So Elliott is the first MNPS Boys Tennis Player to win the state championship in 25 years, and the, and only the third one who's ever done it before. He was named the Boys Tennis Player of the Year at the Tennesseeans Middle Tennessee High School Sports Awards last week. So Elliott, we want to take an opportunity to say congratulations on your victory. We know how much time, practice, and dedication went into your success. And again, thank you for representing your school, your family, and the entire school district so well. Congratulations again. All right, um, I don't know, this might be Hume Fog Day. Maybe we got a name this day. So congratulations again, um, to Elliott, um, to the Hume Fog Boys Tennis Team, and to William on their great, um, achievements. Again, thank you for just representing Hume Fog Academic Magnet in such strong fashion, as well as Nashville Public Schools. Um, with that, Chair Player, thank you for giving us a moment to recognize these phenomenal students and student athletes. I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. And Dr. Bowe knows I was so ecstatic because I'm a tennis player myself, and when she texted me the news, I texted her a meme back of Rafa cheering on. So I understand the hard work it takes to be on that court, and I say, one thing's about tennis, is that it's the only sport, no matter how far you're back, you can always come back and win. And there's no clock, and you can always, if you believe in yourself, you can do it. So to the boys, you have my extended, wholehearted joy of being tennis champions, you always be close to my heart, and that you did it on my watch, so I'm even more happy about that, but congratulations. And there's chocolate cake, so go celebrate. Um, all right, so now we'll move on to, uh, public participation. I am serious, because I'm not, I believe in sharing calories, share the love. Um, and we will start with, um, Daniel Phillips. You will have two minutes to speak. We have a lovely timer by Member Tyler, who is being our lovely Vanna for that. Um, and they'll go down into, um, the clock.
Good evening. I'm Dan Phillips, Director of Academies and CTE for Metro Nashville Public Schools, and I'm here to speak about the architecture, construction, and engineering offerings within MNPS and the opportunities we provide for our students. We currently offer architectural and engineering design, residential and commercial construction, engineering, and mechanical electrical plumbing systems at five of our academy high schools and one of our Academic Magnet High Schools. Our students can earn both industry certifications in either dual credit or dual enrollment through TCAT and Nashville State through these programs, which give our students a competitive advantage as they move on to college and career opportunities after high school. They also, through our career-based learning continuum, get the opportunity to network with industry professionals, visit a variety of workplaces and job sites, go on job shadows, and apply for internships and apprenticeship opportunities to earn while they learn their senior year. Speaking of our business partners, we would not be where we are without the amazing opportunities they provide for our programs while students are with us, as well as after they graduate. We are also adding additional programs in the upcoming year, some as part of the Governor's Give Grant, like Residential and Commercial Construction at Glencliff, and Residential and Commercial Electrical at McGavick, and others through our annual program modification process that will increase opportunities in the architecture, construction, and engineering fields to even more students throughout the district. With guidance from our business partners, we've ensured that our students have access to the most relevant industry-aligned certifications and early post-secondary opportunities. Our commitment to preparing students to be college and career-ready upon graduation drives us continually to refine our curriculum and experiences. In doing so, we equip our students to thrive and contribute meaningfully to Nashville's evolving economic landscape. Thank you.
Thank you. Carl Carter.
Madam Chair, Happy Birthday. MNPS School Board Members and Dr. Battle, I am Dr. Carl Carter, Executive Director of South High Schools. I'm here to provide more information about the model that MNPS provides at our Alternative Learning Centers for our at-risk students. Our alternative schools work seamlessly with MNPS Departments and the student zone school to provide academic and social-emotional support. Additionally, MNPS alternative schools and the zone high schools work together to create re-entry plans that assist in transitioning students back to their schools of zone. MNPS has invested in several partnerships that have greatly benefited our students, and our AON schools in particular. For example, in my network of schools I supervise, 100 students have earned a scholarship through the university MNPS partnership. At our Academy of Nashville schools, students have access to a mix of pathways that promote exploration and college and career opportunities aligned to high-scale, high-wage, high-demand opportunities. Further, some students transition to one of the Simon Youth Academies, where they have opportunities to participate in college visits and where students have access to renewable scholarships. It has been shared that our district, in our district, we have achieved an 85.5 historic graduation rate. This is due to the collaborative efforts with our AOCs, our zone high schools, and our SYF academies. Please continue to support the restorative model that MNPS provides to our at-risk students. Thank you.
Thank you. Myron Franklin.
Good, um, good evening, how's everybody's doing? Happy Birthday. Happy Father's Day to those who have birthed kids in the process. Uh, my name is Myron Franklin, I'm the Principal of Johnson Learning Center. And I'm taken aback by Audrey Lawrence, she said, "If you don't define yourself for yourself, you'll be crushed in other people's fantasies of you and eaten alive." So I'm here today to kind of define myself or define Johnson and ALC and what it means for the district. Johnson is a place that I like to call oasis in the desert. If you hadn't been there, I would invite all of you all to come and see what we do. The work that we do is beyond restorative. We like to pride ourselves on- We like to pride ourselves on what we like to call our Johnson Model, which is to recalibrate, restore, and reconnect young people to themselves, their education, and their community. And we do that through several ways. I'm not here to bash anybody or anything. I'm here to promote Johnson, because I think what we do is very, very good for young people, particularly those disenfranchised young people. We have young people who have been stuck in the middle of their education, trying to figure out what's next. At Johnson, we've actually made changes. Here, this year I can speak to, we have three kids that have graduated from Johnson or left Johnson at senior year, and they're making $27 an hour. How does that happen? Because at Johnson, we expose young people, expose them to career opportunities. At Johnson, we make sure that when you go back to your school, you're mindful, you're inspired, and you're better. That is the purpose, and I think that is the goal of any alternative program. I'd like to look at Johnson more of a signature program. I think it's one of Metro's signature programs for students who've made an academic mistake. And if we continue to invest and reinvest our dollars and making sure that these young people in our schools are taken care of, I think we can go a very long way. I wouldn't turn our back on Johnson. I would actually turn Phase Four and March Run quickly into how we can better support Johnson and make sure that the students there are taken care of and handled with care. If we can't do that, I think we'll all be misguided, because once we fix this issue with young people, I think we fixed our nation and we fixed our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Ameed White.
Hello, once again, I'm Dr. Ameed White. Good to see you all. I understand it's a birthday in the house, and Happy Father's Day, so good to see everyone. I'm excited to be before you once again to share updates on the progress we've made since we've last met. Thank you for the spirited discussion about the Rock Academy. Your thoughtful questions and feedback were not only appreciated, they were energizing. And honestly, I'm even more excited today because of the positive responses and momentum we've been experiencing. We're leaning in with optimism and focus. Over the past month, we've made 56 specific revisions to our 466-page application, each one intentionally crafted to directly address the feedback we receive from both you and the Charter Office. In addition to that, we've secured more power partners who are committed to this work and who believe in what we're building. We've also deepened our community outreach, meeting with families, local leaders, and potential collaborators to ensure the Rock Academy is rooted in the real needs and aspirations of those we seek to serve. Since our recent mission, in the past two weeks, we've also received an additional $250,000 in addition to the over $1 million we've already committed to ensure we do this work effectively. These conversations have reinforced what we have already known, that there is a critical gap for students who are often overlooked and overwhelmed, desire for a school that sees them, hears them, and builds with them. I stand here not just as a school founder, but on behalf of the families and community members who are ready, who are saying, finally, someone is building a school with our children in mind. You have an opportunity to say yes to something bold, something necessary, and something deeply aligned to the needs of this city. I urge you to vote yes, not just for a school, but for a future where every student has a chance to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Right at the buzzer. Nicole Robb.
Hi, I am Nicole Robb, been an educator for 23 years, and I started in behavior. My passion was always to figure out the why, so I can correct what you did. Coming out of a public school and TA behavior and working as a regular TA, I figured out teachers don't have time to figure out your why. So you just become a distraction, and you get rolled up all the time. You gotta get out of my class. I have 23 other kids to teach. So that is the opportunity part with Rock Academy. We will be a mobile school. We're not just gonna be a sign, "Come here." We're gonna go find these kids. Everybody wins with Rock Academy, because we're working with every school. We'll be talking to principals. Who are these kids who have been out 45 days? Who's been ISS for 33 days? Who can't read, and who's given up? Who's dropped out? We'll be reaching parents. We'll be an opportunity touching you on the shoulder. Why aren't you in school? Well, let me give you another opportunity to believe. That is what Rock Academy is standing on, and that's why it's necessary. When I took the time to figure out the why, it was easier to correct what you did. We will care. We will connect. We will reconnect. We will nurture. We will pour in, and then we will guide you to success, and everybody wins. Stand with the Rock. It's necessary. Allow the Rock Academy to be one of the offers that you have. Thank you.
Good evening, good evening, good evening. I am Lakeeta Sims, and it is a pleasure and an honor to be before you again. I thank you for your time today. I especially thank you, because I know this was pushed up and it was accelerated. You had a little bit of time to look through it, so thank you, thank you, thank you. With that being said, I just wanted to give you an update as well. Since the last time we met, we've been hard at working and making sure we do our community service. That was one of the things that you mentioned. So in that time, we've reached and knocked over 1,386 doors, collected over 440 survey surveys, of which 294 of them gave us signature support saying, "Open the Rock Academy." We also identified 21 students of those students that are eligible to be students of the Rock Academy in 2026. We collected over 75 letters of support. And in the past two weeks, just the past two weeks, we've raised an additional commitment of $250,000, which is in addition to the $1 million that we've already committed to for the first year of us being able to open. So we made sure that we went above and beyond to reach those needs and those things that you addressed in a previous application. So I just wanted to make sure we pointed that out. But as a result, this is not just a new start. Just like your other schools just came up here and talked about in their response, this is a continuation. This is a partnership. We're wanting to go above and beyond and connect with MNPS. We want you to know that this is not just another time, but this is something real, a real school for a real time for such a time as this. And at that, I ran upon my purpose and my pursuit of understanding. I ran across the quote, and it says, "If you had it all figured out today, there would not be anything to learn tomorrow." So enjoy being a work in progress. And this quote stuck out to me, because it says, "There's discovery in essential things, and Rock Academy is essential." So we need your vote, and we ask that you vote yes today. Thank you.
Thank you. Wood Caldwell.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to come speak with y'all today. Wood Caldwell represents the Forge School. I'm on their board. Just a little background, I am a graduate civil engineer. Practiced civil engineering for seven years, and then transferred over into the commercial real estate development business for the last 40 years with a company called Southeast Venture, which I'm one of the principals. And there, we consult with architects, contractors, and engineers every week. And so in talking with them, there is a major shortage of these types of individuals who have these skill sets that are very much needed in Nashville and the Middle Tennessee area. What makes the Forge different is that all three of those groups, architects, contractors, engineers, the teaching of those principles, all come under one roof. That's very rare. Get my civil engineering degree, I never met with architects, and I never met with contractors. And so only when I started my professional life did I get to where I was doing that. So that's what I think really makes the Forge different and stands out, is that those are all under a roof, and they're working with each other and trying to understand each other's responsibilities throughout the development process. So it's very critical. And then with us, we want to team up with the state universities to bring them into the Forge, giving them, seeing the opportunities that they can have there. So anyway, please consider that when y'all vote tonight. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Troy Smith.
I'm gonna try to make my speech as eloquent as I can, as everybody else has. My name is Troy Smith. I'm actually in the business of banking. I help people actually probably get the money to build these buildings. But I'm on behalf of the Forge School. I'm gonna just tell you a brief story. I'm a parent, and my son, seven years old at the time, was drawing a lot of buildings. So the thing is, I was like, man, there gotta be something much different than just worrying about playing sports. I grew up in the inner city. And all we knew about making it out to the inner city was either being an athlete, or being an entertainer, or doing something else, or in somebody's box. So we never really thought about the idea of thinking about using your brain to do something, being creative in any way. So I've made it a point, my wife and I made it a point, to make sure our kids actually use their brain and to be actually creative in what they're doing. And my kids love to draw. And one thing my son loves to do is draw buildings. I mean, if he was in the room, he could tell you which building is the tallest in a different state, all that type of stuff. And so I was talking to my friend Derek Williams, which a lot of you all may know. And I was like, man, you know what? I wish we can actually get a program that my son could be a part of in the summer to actually help him on pulling this gift out of him, actually learning more about building and structures and all that. They say, "Man, that's crazy you talking about that, bro." Because I know a school called the Forge is coming to Nashville, and I think it'd be a good opportunity for him to be a part of it. Now, he's only nine now. Of course, this school is going towards the middle school age, but I think it's a great opportunity for that school to be here to actually teach other kids that, you know what? You can actually use your brain and mindset and thought or creativity compared to just always being an athlete or entertaining. So that's the point why I think that school would be a benefit to the city, and I hope y'all vote yes on that. All right.
Thank you. Jennifer Rhodes.
Hello, my name is Jennifer, and I'm with District 109 Support of Rock Academy. I've been a social worker for almost 10 years and have used my own lived experience of aging out of the foster care system, while also being a program coordinator for the past four years for an educational program for youth that age out of care to get their post-secondary education. I strongly believe that education should be a safe place where youth are wrapped around and supported, but often, it can be a place that presents ongoing challenges for unseen and misunderstood youth. In my personal educational journey in high school alone, I attended 10 high schools due to being in foster care, and it affected the continuity I needed to be successful and hindered my ability to develop trusting relationships in the school setting. One of the high school settings that I was in was in group home, and I feel like so often, education was pushed to the side, and I wasn't truly able to absorb the materials or set up for success. I wasn't taught healthy study skills. I couldn't really engage with my teachers, and I didn't really feel like anyone cared about that quality education that I so strongly wanted and needed. This is so common for youth in care and underserved backgrounds that their behavior problems or issues are focused on more than the protective factor of being provided a quality education, or it's seen as the root issue that doesn't come from... Or it's seen as a root issue... Sorry, the root issue is not seen that set them up to be unsuccessful in school. Students need a dedicated person and a full staff that are committed to all students. Another area that I feel would have benefited me is the understanding and use of an IEP. As a mom now of a neurodivergent child, I now understand why I was so underprepared and struggled in the school setting. There was not support in helping me understand and know my own learning style, and that had a huge effect on me as a young adult and into my college experience as well. I would love to see there be an intentional focus on broad efforts and IEPs that are specialized and create trauma-informed settings, staff that advocate for youth, and then being able to be, youth being taught more about their identity and develop a sense of belonging. I believe that Rock Academy is a well-rounded approach and has dedication to all students, and no one can take away your education.
Thank you. Sarah Tuttle.
Good evening. I want to begin by thanking the MNPS Charter Office for their thoughtfulness and professionalism throughout this process. We took their feedback very seriously, revising 243 pages of our application, including 48 signatures of support, and growing our petitions to 389 community signatures so far. This process was not about compliance for us. It was about listening, improving, and designing a school that offers Nashville students the highest standards and deepest care. The amended version of the Forge School is stronger. It is intentionally designed to meet the unique needs and bold aspirations of young people in this city. I recognize that many of you came here with your minds already made up, and I respect that. And with that in mind, I'd like to use this opportunity to share two important messages. First, to the families watching here tonight. If your child loves to build, if your child dreams in sketches and designs, if your child problem solves best with projects and their imagination, this school is for you. If you want your child to graduate with industry credentials alongside college and career pathways to high-wage, high-demand careers in architecture, construction, or engineering, and the entire web, the Forge School is for you, and we look forward to welcoming you. Secondly, to the elected officials in this room and Nashville stakeholders. Education should never be a monopoly. We are stronger when we can elaborate, not when we compete. Dr. White and I may be proposing very different models, but we share a deep commitment to equity, innovation, and serving students who deserve more, more school choice, and more opportunity from our public education system. In closing, if we're granted the privilege of opening, I extend an open invitation to each of you. Come walk our halls, see the work, meet our students, and help us build something that belongs to this city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Carol Brown.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all today. My name is Dr. Carol L. Brown. I am an MNPS parent and proudly serve as the Director of Attendance Services, one of many departments within Student Support Services where attendance matters all day, every day. Over the past several years, we've built a robust system of support using high-level, evidence-based strategies focused on prevention, early intervention, and intensified support for our most vulnerable students. As a result, we've seen a consistent decrease in chronic absenteeism since the COVID-19 pandemic. Our district-wide Attendance Matters Campaign has helped all staff understand their role in preventing absenteeism. We believe in a holistic, coordinated approach across Student Support Services, which leads to a stronger academic and social and emotional outcomes versus an isolated standalone approach that leads to diminished results for students, according to national research. Our attendance goals are ambitious, at 93% or higher, which reflects our belief in what all students are capable of achieving. In contrast, I understand there are some charter schools that only aim for 80% of students to attend 80% of the time. That would allow or be acceptable for students to miss over 36 instructional days or a loss of more than two months of learning in a single year. At MNPS, we have the systems, resources, partnerships, and proven strategies to support students and families and reduce chronic absenteeism, and increase academic growth and achievement. Thank you all for your time again, and please remember that attendance matters all day, every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Sonia Thomas.
Good evening, MNPS District Leaders and School Board Members. My name is Sonia Thomas, and I serve as the Executive Director of Nashville Propel. I'm here to speak to you about the charter school selection process. I come before you tonight as a parent and as a registered voter, as someone who works directly with families across the city, families who are simply trying to find the best path forward for their children. At Nashville Propel, 49% of the families we serve attend public charter schools, while 51% attend traditional public schools. We don't take sides. We take the side of children. We support families wherever they are, because every student deserves access to a high-quality public education. But let's be honest, two applications will likely be denied tonight, and not because they're of poorer quality than their neighborhood counterparts, not because the data says they're inadequate, but because of bias, politics, and fear of innovation. Too often, we see applications rejected simply because someone has the courage to imagine something beyond the district. Instead of being met with collaboration, they're met with resistance, retaliation, and threats. That's not accountability. That's obstruction. And what's most disappointing is that this isn't unique to Nashville. We're watching these same tactics play out at the highest levels of government, even from the President of the United States. As a parent and a citizen, I am profoundly disappointed. But even in this moment, I want to plant a seed of opportunity. District schools and public charter schools are not enemies. They are stronger together. Imagine what could happen if we stopped operating in silos and started collaborating for real results. Thank you.
Carla McAllister.
Good evening, Board Members. My name is Carla McAllister, and I live in District 5. I grew up in District 5. I'm a powerful parent with Nashville Propel, a concerned parent, and a registered voter in Metro Nashville. I'm here tonight to speak about a critical issue that directly impacts our children's education. that directly impacts our children's education and the future of our public school system, which is the approval process for public charter schools. Parents in this community deserve, and frankly, we demand, full transparency. When it comes to these approvals, we need to clearly understand the rationale behind every decision, the data supporting each application, and the specific reasons behind any denial. Transparency should be selective or situational. It should never be selective or situational. It must be consistent and comprehensive. When an application is denied, families deserve to know why. Was it due to academic concerns, operational weakness, lack of community engagement? We shouldn't have to guess. We should be informed. And while on the topic of transparency and access, let me also point out the process does not, this process does not give parents adequate time or opportunity to arrive at a 5:00 PM meeting in national traffic. You say parent voice matters, but how can we participate fully when the timing of these meetings creates a barrier to being heard? As registered voters, my fellow parents and I are committed to advocating for policies that prevent what we only describe as bad actions by bad actors with bad intentions from influencing our school system. That means demanding robust oversight, clear accountability, and a process that always puts the well-being of our students first. We urge you to truly listen to the voices of parents and implement measures that ensure complete transparency and accountability in every charter school decision. Our children's futures are too important for anything less. Thank you.
Matthew Nelson?
Good evening and happy birthday, Chair Player. My name is Matthew Nelson. I'm the proud Executive Director for College and Career Readiness for MNPS. As we consider the future of educational opportunities in our district, I want to be sure that we take a moment to elevate the incredible college and career readiness work that's already happening in our district right now in our MNPS high schools. Through the Academies of Nashville, every student in our zoned high schools has access to nationally-recognized models that provide specialized career pathways, robust work-based learning, and direct connections to industry and post-secondary partners, all while remaining fully engaged in the rich academic extracurricular and social experiences that only a comprehensive high school can offer. For example, our architecture, construction, engineering pathways provide students with industry-aligned certifications, dual enrollment, and dual credit opportunities through partners like TCAT Nashville and Nashville State Community College. These schools also offer immersive work-based experiences with leading local firms, preparing them to meet the growing talent needs of Nashville's construction and engineering sectors. Students in our high schools do not have to choose between career readiness and a well-rounded high school experience. They can earn industry credentials, partner, participate in internships, complete early college coursework, and develop the real-world skills necessary, all within their neighborhood schools. This integrated approach prepares students not just for graduation, but for lifelong success in college, career, and beyond. So as we look at opportunities to expand choice and innovation in our district, I encourage us also to recognize support and continue investing in the strong, proven models that we have that serve all students equitably, so every student is known. The Academies of Nashville are a point of pride for MNPS and a powerful example of what's possible when we align on vision and resources. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes public participation. We will now move into committee reports. We will begin with Member Mays with the Student School Board Search Committee.
Thank you, Chair Player. It is my honor to announce that Ms. Ava DeCash was chosen as our incoming junior student school board member, starting in the 2025 school year, 2025-26 school year. Ava was, out of over 20 applicants, she rose to the top, and she impressed the entire selection committee with her knowledge, with her desire to support, and with her ability to do the things that she would be required to do. She succeeds Christina Tran, who was our senior student school board member who graduated in May, and we will welcome Ava in August, as she's sworn in, to begin her two-year service. And I'm excited, and I thank each one of my fellow colleagues for participating in the selection committee. I think we, we have a young lady who's going to do well. So thank you, Chair.
Thank you. We will now move on to Vice Chair Nomad Kinney to give a Budget Committee report.
Thank you, Chair Player. We had a robust conversation during the Budget and Finance Committee today, and went very, had a very transparent conversation and went into detail about the budget and where we are related to the budget for the FY '26 school year. That budget was officially approved, and it will be the budget starting July 1. So if you did not have a chance to look at that budget or listen to the, be a part of the conversation, it is available on MNPS's, is it the Metro Nashville website link. You can go in and look and listen to that budget conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to governance issues. I will entertain a motion for the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion? There has been a motion by Member Young. Is there a second? Second by Vice Chair Nomad Kinney. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the Consent Agenda, say aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Now we'll move on to new start charter, amended new start charter applications. Dr. Battle?
Thank you so much, Chair. I'd like to invite up Dr. Sharika Robi Grant, who will be leading the presentation. She is the Executive Director of our Charter Office.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Battle, thank you for the opportunity to share the MNPS Charter Schools Office Review Team Reports on three amended new start charter applications. On February 3, 2025, the MNPS Charter School Office received three new start charter applications. Review team members read, reviewed, and rated each applicable section of the applications received. On April 22, 2025, the Charter Office presented these findings from the initial review, and the Board voted to deny all three new start charter applications. Each applicant received an official notice of the reasons for denial and was provided the opportunity to resubmit an amended application to MNPS. On May the 23, 2025, the MNPS Charter School Office received three amended new start charter applications from each applicant. The evidence findings of each amended new start application are included in the rubric findings provided each applicant and MNPS board members and a high-level overview in today's presentation. The overall objective in the amended new start application process is to convene the review team members, evaluate the amended new start application using the published evaluation criteria from the Tennessee Department of Education, rate each amended section using the TDOE rating standards, reach a consensus among the review team regarding the rating of each section, as well as the overall application, and provide the rubric findings and a required consensus summary rating to the MNPS Board of Education for a vote. The review team utilized the rubric provided by TDOE to determine the rating for each section, as well as the overall rating for each amended new start application. The ratings included meets or exceeds standard, partially meets standard, and does not meet standard. As indicated in the guidance from TDOE, to be eligible for approval, an application must earn a rating of meets or exceeds standard for each applicable section and the overall application evaluation rating. Review members considered the totality of evidence when the overall application rating was determined. Please note, the MNPS Board of Education's vote makes the final determination on whether the application is approved or denied. Tennessee Public Charter Schools Act of 2002 requires that the LEA approve or deny a public charter school's amended application no later than 60 days after receipt of the completed amended application. The statute also states that if an LEA does not vote within 60 days of receipt of an amended application, the amended application is deemed approved. Tonight, the Board has the following voting options for the applications received. Approve or deny each amended new start application. There are few points to consider when deliberating the decision to approve or deny the amended applications received. Note, the review team was comprised of MNPS content experts from various departments, as well as an external reviewer. The application ratings that were determined were based on the guidance from the Tennessee Department of Education's rubric. And lastly, if an applicant is denied, the applicant may appeal to the Tennessee Public Charter Commission no later than 10 days after the date of the local Board of Education's decision. The consensus summary ratings for the amended new start applications determine that The Forge, Rocketship Tennessee Number Five, and The Rock Academy are ineligible for approval based on the TDOE rubric evidence findings and ratings. As noted in the rubric guidance in the previous slide, to be eligible for approval, an amended new start application must earn a rating of meets or exceeds standard for each applicable section and an overall application evaluation rating. Applicants were expected to correct deficiencies identified and note the corrections in their original application review. During the amended application process, each applicant either fully addressed the deficiencies, attempted but did not fully address the deficiencies, or failed to address the deficiencies in the amended applications. Additionally, each applicant had the opportunity to improve their ratings from partially meets the standard to meets the standard. The review team assigned the ratings accordingly. For The Forge, partially meets standard in all applicable sections. For Rocketship Tennessee Number Five, partially meets standard in academics plan and design, partially meets standard in financial plan and capacity, and partially meets standard in portfolio review performance record. Rocketship Tennessee Number Five actually improved their original rating from partially meets standard to meets the standard in operations, plan, and capacity. Lastly, The Rock Academy partially meets standard in all applicable sections. Each applicant, as well as the MNPS Board, received the rubric evidence findings highlighting the strengths as well as concerns for each applicable section of the amended application. I will highlight a few of the concerns noted by review team members for each applicant. For The Forge, the noted concerns were, but not limited to, parent and community engagement and support, recruitment and enrollment, facilities, and the operating budget. For Rocketship Tennessee Number Five, the application noted concerns were, but not limited to, academic focus and performance standard, recruitment and enrollment, parent and community engagement and support, and the academic performance record. And for The Rock Academy, the noted concerns were, but not limited to, school calendar and schedule, recruitment and enrollment, facilities, transportation, and the operating budget. The Forge, Rocketship Tennessee Number Five, and The Rock Academy do not meet or exceed the standards in all applicable section categories of the amended new start application. I will turn it over to the Board for the vote and discussion of our first amended new start application, The Forge. Please remember that each charter application must be voted on separately.
Thank you, Dr. Robi Grant. I will entertain a motion for The Forge.
Thank you, Chair Player. I make a motion to deny the appeal of the amended new charter start, new start, yeah, the amended new start charter application for The Forge School, based on the charter school's review team evidence finding report and presentation noting deficiencies in the academic plan and design, operations plan and capacity, and financial plan and capacity. Among those within the review team's evidence, I would note these specific concerns that should be addressed, but are still deficient, but not limited to, is parent and community engagement and support, recruitment and enrollment, facilities, and operating budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Second by a board member.
I would just make a clarification. This is the second stage, so they would not have an ability to come back before this board, so this would be to the commission.
Okay. Do we need to change our motion?
I think the motion, they just would not have an opportunity to address that before this board.
Okay. Thank you. It's been seconded by Member Fane. Discussion. Uh, Member Young?
Thank you, Chair. This isn't, I guess, specific to this particular school. Is it really, the question is overall in all three of the resubmittals, but in a couple of the emails we've received from a couple of the schools, I think more than one mentioned that this timeline seemed to be faster than it had been in the past. And so, is this, are we considering these appeals sooner than we have historically, and if so, why?
Could you go back to Slide 5? So, the record, Robi Grant, if you want to talk about, yeah, it's that one. So, by Tennessee Code annotated, the Board of Education must approve or deny the public education charter school amended application no later than, no later than 60 days. So, the window is from the point of that we receive it, we have just, we can't take more than 60 days to actually review the charter application. If you looked at the original date, the July date would have put us in jeopardy of not making the 60-day mark.
And one final question that's kind of similar, because it's not necessarily specific to just The Forge, but when I, when I look back at, at past applications that this board denies based on the recommendation of the Charter Office, and then sometimes those get approved at the State Charter Commission, I guess, how is it that they're able to, to do that? Because by how I read this, these are ineligible to be approved based on the rubric that is created by the Tennessee Department of Education. But yet, then the Tennessee Department of Education's Charter Commission turns around and approves them. And I guess, on one hand, I understand we can't, I guess, put words in the mouth, and we can't read the minds of that commission, but I just, I struggle with the disconnect on how, how when our experts look at it, we say, hey, this isn't, this isn't up to snuff. This doesn't meet the requirements that the state has set out, and then yet, the state somehow determines, in their view, it is. And I don't even know that that's something that we're able to answer, but that's just a disconnect that I don't understand, more than anything else.
Unfortunately, we can't answer that on behalf of the, of the state. So, but point well-received. Are you finished?
Okay. Member Elron?
Thank you. I would argue that part of the reason that those are approved sometimes, we would not approve them, are because we also have the additional responsibility to consider our responsibility to MNPS, be that our own budget, or strategic plan, or headcount, or hiring and all of those things, where the state does not have to have that information, nor do they frankly care about that information, as it's not considered within their review. nor do they frankly care about that information, as it's not considered within their review. So for us, a lot of times you'll hear me discuss, when we discuss charter schools, is a concern of, is it needed? It's a typical first question of mine, is, is this needed in that area? Are these seats needed? Is there been a request in this area? Has, how are the charter schools been doing in that area? My understanding from the Donaldson-Hermitage area is that charter schools have historically, we've had a few approved from the state, but they have not been doing well, and that those seats aren't needed there. For me, that's a concern, because if those seats aren't needed, then we're having an issue of opening a school that's not, that's not needed, but also, students don't leave their classrooms in pretty little classroom bundles, they leave in onesie-twosie groups. And so that leaves the other schools where the students come from, excuse me, with these outstanding set fixed costs, which is a judicial responsibility of ours that the state doesn't typically consider. So I would say that that's a big part of it, is from my decision-making purposes, I'll say specifically, is the state would see that differently than we do. So for me, I will consider, like, this is, uh, the Forge has up to eight hundred and twenty-five students, so that would be about fifteen million dollars annually, if you look at our per pupil cost. When we think about fifteen million dollars annually, particularly considering our recent budget conversations, what would we do with fifteen million dollars? How would we use that to be innovative in our own schools that already exist, particularly because when looking at the report, particularly looking at the information that was on our agenda, so I know, heard the request for transparency, and I can understand how if you felt like this is the only presentation we see, that that would be upsetting to you, I, I get that. So if you look through our agenda, you can see all the information, and there was a bunch of packs that include the Charter Creation Application Evaluation Guidance and Review Tool. It's over two hundred pages of stuff. And within that, let me scroll back down, because I had to make sure I got that name right. Um, there are some definite concerns that are listed a couple of times about how there's not a strong demonstration for need for this school, because our academies, which are the academies inside of our schools, our twelve comprehensive high schools, I don't want to get them confused with the Simons Youth Academies, which sometimes happens, particularly some of the public participation we had, but within our academies, we have, um, uh, again, I'm scrolling, my apologies. We have construction, engineering, and architecture. Admittedly, they're not underneath the same house, to my knowledge, at any of those academies. Am I correct or incorrect there? Or they, do we have any school that has all three? Construction, architecture, and engineering?
Construction and architecture.
Construction and architecture.
Construction and architecture are usually together?
And engineering.
Okay, and then engineering's a separate one usually. Okay. That's how I had seen it, I've not seen all, an academy that encompasses all three, but there is some still availability for those students to, though you're assigned to one academy, there's some crossover there. My concerns within this school, though I did also appreciate the information that was sent to us, uh, by Ms., uh, by Sarah Tuttle, um, which, I don't know, but that's available, publicly available, but it was sent to us, so, um, but that information's out there as well. Um, my concerns with that school, not only are do the seats not to be, seem to not be needed, um, but the concerns, according to the rubric, is that there's not a strong demonstration for need, and that its offerings are not meaningfully different from our current academies' models, and that, uh, there's some additional concerns about there not being a universal screening process, and that would, of course, affect their tiered interventions, particularly those with disabilities, and, um, there, of course, are some additional operational concerns, and including that there's no comprehensive safety plan, and that there's insufficient special education transportation needs and some other things. But those are my concerns, and I'm hoping to address, um, Board Member Young's concerns as much as I could be of assistance.
Any other discussion? All right, I will move to a vote. Um, there is a motion to deny from, um, made by Vice Chair Nabah Kenny, seconded by Member Fane. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any oppose?
No.
There is one opposed, so the, um, vote is eight to one, um, for the Forge. We will now move on to the next, um, next vote.
The next board vote is Rocketship Tennessee Number Five.
Um, I will entertain a motion, uh, for Rocketship Number, Tennessee Number Five. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to deny the, uh, application, uh, for Rocketship Number Five, based on the review specifically indicating, um, the, uh, academic focus and performance, recruitment and enrollment, parent and community engagement and support, and academic performance record, as is highlighted from the Charter Office for Metro Nashville Public Schools.
Is there a second? There is a second by Member Tyler. Member Elrod?
Hello, again, in the spirit of transparency. I'm your girl talking. Um, so, uh, with Rocketship, there are some concerns, as you could see in the presentation that was provided, and of course, within the additional materials that we were provided as a board, and of course, the public was provided, as our agenda is available on Thursday on the board calendar. This school does not meet, um, it only partially meets for academic and financial plan. I appreciate the call out that they did do some improvements enough to meet the requirements, but not exceed the requirements of operations, which is an improvement from their past, um, um, application, and that's, that's the desire and the hope. Within Rocketship, again, my concerns are surrounding about the need for this school. Uh, Rocketship has had an ongoing, uh, concern with under-enrollment at their current schools, and they stay pretty heavily inside all of this, um, application, that they feel like they're a needed school in the area due to overcrowding, um, but it doesn't have any information about how there's new facilities at both Lakeview and Paragon Mills, and there's about over a thousand seats that are being built in those areas, and so, um, Rocketship Number Five is hoping for five hundred and seventy-six students, grades K through five. However, as I just said, those seats are not necessarily needed, because the new facilities that are being added on to at Lakeview and Paragon Mills add about a thousand seats. So that's more than enough to take care of that over-enrollment. Again, that is an area with typically a lot of over-enrollment, so we are quite proud of being able to provide those things. And again, I guess, to the conversation about the state, the state would not know about our capital plans, so that's also sometimes an issue or concern, they don't know what we have going on construction-wise to already fit the needs that might be brought up, because that's not their responsibility. Um, but, um, those are my concerns currently with Rocketship, is that the seats aren't needed, there are, of course, concerns academically, that they've not been doing well, um, and within the financial as well, that they've not met those things, and so, um, those are my, my big concerns.
Thank you. Member Mays?
Yes, and, uh, thank you, uh, Board Member Elrod, uh, for bringing that up, and like you, I've been scrolling through, and just as a reminder, this information is public information, and you can review the, um, the, uh, details on why this particular application does not meet, uh, expectations. The capacity issue is a big one for me, simply because, to your point, there are already, there are already plans being made to address any overcrowding that is happening in southeast, and, um, we need to make sure that we're considering that. The application does not seem to consider that, um, we are already making plans for the capacity issues. It, um, seems to almost exaggerate the capacity issue somewhat, so, um, I would encourage anyone who has questions about why I made the motion to deny this application, please go and read the findings that are available publicly, as, uh, Board Member Elrod said in the agenda that comes out on the Thursday prior, so, thank you.
Um, Member, oh, you have a point of clarification?
I do have a point of clarification, thank you. I misspoke, it said that the Lakeview and Paragon Mills, um, additions and growth of their facilities will create a thousand seats. I neglected to add that it's Lakeview, Paragon Mills, which again are both MNPS elementary school students, schools, excuse me, and Kip Global Elementary, which opens this fall. So Kip Global Elementary is another charter school that's opening, um, fall 2025, and those three together will be over a thousand seats. So again, that will be difficult. And is there another charter school that's opening in that area? Because we've had a lot of growth.
We have another school opening.
Oh, yes, we also have our own. We also have our own MNPS school, which again, the state would not know. Name unknown. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, I will move to a vote. Um, all in favor, um, there has been a motion to deny Rocketship Number Five, made by Member Mays, seconded by Member Tyler. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? It, the motion passes unanimously. All right, Dr. Robie Grant?
We will move to the last vote, uh, for the Rock Academy.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for the Rock Academy. Is there a motion?
I have a motion.
Okay, Member Fane?
I make a motion to deny the new start charter application based on the charter school's evidence finding report and presentation noting deficiencies in academic plan and design, operations plan and capacity, and financial plan and capacity.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Before there's a second.
Oh, sorry.
Before there's a second, I'd just ask if there are specific reasons for that denial within those sections.
Um, highlighting facilities, transportation, and overall operating budget.
Thank you.
All right, there is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Uh, second made by Vice Chair Nabah Kenny. Is there a discussion? Member Fane?
I just want to highlight, um, with the capacity needed in southeast, we don't have that constraint. In District Five, a lot of our schools are not meeting, um, enrollment, um, so, one of my biggest concerns for any development of a new school or program is, you know, where are the kids coming from, which was also highlighted in recruitment and enrollment.
Comments? Uh, Member Block?
Um, we talked when this, uh, application first came in front of us, I've mentioned one of my concerns is, um, around the, uh, operating budget and the available funding. These are expensive programs. This, I, I'm making this comment as much for our knowledge as for, um, as for folks at the state. The TESA allocation will not cover the cost, and so this application has, uh, somewhere between a one point one, um, when you, when you put it in their, in their budget, um, mentioning title funds and all the other federal funds and various things, there's still a one point one million to one point four million dollar annual gap, and actually in the, in the year one operations, the budget in the application shows a, a four hundred thousand dollar gap, and, and the budget, um, the next year shows something like an eighty thousand dollar gap, and, and the application, they, the, they do a, a decent job of trying to explain how they will raise the money and how it's going to happen, but that, that money is not there. Um, it isn't secured, and, um, this is going to be an issue not just potentially for this school, but for other opportunity charter schools that are proposed, and I, I, so, one of the questions I have in, in, you know, a, a yes or a no vote on this particular application is, if there is a gap, how do we make up for the gap? Where, where does the gap money end up coming from? Um, and I think it's a consideration that folks, uh, at the state level need to make. Um, and, you know, I, I applaud the applicant for trying to figure out how to do this, but we're not there yet, so.
Any other comments? Member Elrod?
Thank you. Um, so, the, the Rock is wanting to have three hundred and thirty-three students, grades nine through twelve, and I know that during our last conversation on the board, there was a lot of comments that were basically that this was a, um, interesting idea, was usually the kind of comment that I heard, and it is interesting in the sense that those students do need so much additional assistance and deserve it, particularly when they are commonly overlooked. Um, so, I respect greatly that there is a different angle to this, and that there is a lot of passion. Um, the people that have come and talked with us, spoke to us, or have emailed us, really thoughtful people that are doing hard work, um, and wanting to push that ball forward in a new way for themselves. Um, my strong suggestion would be that there are places that exist with MNPS that could always use assistance, because we always need assistance, because we are who we are, um, we will always need help, that could use that type of energy and, uh, experience and knowledge and ability. Um, we have, to make sure that it's known on the board, students that are kind of in this in-between area that the Rock is stating that they're trying to catch, is already a group of students that we have a focus on. There's been a lot of conversation over the past two years of trying to update what we used to call, um, our ALCs, or, we have new names for them and all kinds of things, but we have also, of course, have the Simons Youth Academies that are also for these types of students, and also, of course, we have just our everyday classrooms, and we have really important transition plans and programs to try to make sure that our students are not excluded from their everyday classrooms, and that they are able to have the full experience, whether they have made, as I think was mentioned during public participation by someone, some type of mistake, and they are now having to be in a different type of classroom environment, the goal is always to reunite, and the goal is always to try to be, um, effective and helpful. That said, we too work with all schools, all of our Simon Youth Academies, all of our ALCs, whether they're WA Bass or Johnson, those schools work with all of our schools and do transition plans for all of them. My concerns, again, are that it feels like this is something we already do. Again, if there is an innovative group of people that want to help with some other programming in than that, I think that's impressive, but doing it on your own requires extraordinary talent and extraordinary commitment, because these students deserve nothing less than that, because of the at-risk populations that you deal with. So it is really concerning to me when there's unclear diploma pathways, when there's not clear IEP processes listed, when there's an omission of even the alternate academic diploma, which is a absolute thing that they should know about, um, that there's not adequate operational considerations, considering the projected IEP populations, and again, there's a lot of overlap there. So it not only not being vitally different from what's already existed, it is also concerning that it is not well-supported, be that operationally, as mentioned, through projected expenses, which of course are not just one-time expenses, but ongoing expenses, but- but also through their own planning, leadership, and making sure that they're prepared for the work ahead. So those are my concerns.
Any other comments? Member Taylor?
I have a couple of comments. I'm thinking about just our overall process in general. I think Board Member Young brought up a good point earlier in thinking about, you know, ultimately, these schools are going to appeal at the state level and could very likely be given a charter. And now we have no real relationship with these schools. And so I think Board Member Elrod mentioned that, hey, we have schools that may do some of this work already. And about support those schools or partner, we have to be willing partners on that end. And we have to make sure that the community knows that we're willing partners. They're telling us, we got a room full of people here, we get emails and phone calls about this. The community, parents, our constituents are telling us that there is a gap. And I can't sit up here and social gaslight these folks and pretend like we're covering every need for every student in our district. We do a great job of supporting the overwhelming majority of students in Nashville. We do an amazing job of that work. However, there is a small percentage of students, we're talking about 333 students on here. I can almost guarantee you that there are 330 students in Nashville that could benefit from a different program than what we currently offer. And I don't have any specific data, but I got a ton of anecdotes. And I'm gonna give one just briefly. Many of y'all know I serve as the administrator at my church. And my church is on Clarksville Highway, in District One. Haynes Park is right behind us. We had a family. Y'all also may know that I served as a family involvement specialist in the school system. That was over almost 10 years ago, Jesus. I probably didn't have as much gray hair then either. I used to go visit this family. There are 10 kids living in that household, and they weren't coming to school. And so I would go to the house, see what we could do to support them to come to school, make sure that they were receiving education that their children deserved, but it just wasn't happening. We have come miles from that point in time where we are able to provide services to families like that. However, just a couple of years ago, the older children in that family decided to come up to my church, break into one of the buses, they were smoking weed in there, and caught the bus on fire. And this was during the day. The same group of kids also were stealing cars during the school day. It's not during the summer or off periods or anything like that. It's during the school day. They're stealing cars to where Metro Police Department is asking me, can I allow them to come up and put trackers on the cars so that they can track the kids driving back and forth around town? Now, I know that that's just one story, it's an anecdote of what's going on. But they are kids that, for whatever reason, the academies that we have, Alternative Learning Center, Juvenile Justice Services aren't reaching those kids. This school is looking to provide those children with a different opportunity. That's all they're asking for. And I think, I take my role as a school board member very seriously. And I think as stewards over the resources that we have, it's our job to say, we have taxpayers in the room that are asking us to utilize resources for something different. That's what they're asking for. We tell parents that we want their engagement, we want their involvement. And then when they come, we find reasons to say, you know what? This is, we know more, we got more information, all of those things, and we're gonna make a decision that we know is in the best interest of the overall district. Now, we could be right. We could be wrong, though. And I just struggle with just the automatic, you know, it costs too much money for us to do a charter school, or there's not enough capacity as far as classroom space, or this overlaps with a program that we already offer. For me, in my decision-making process, I think about what does the community want? Because I'm an elected official, I'm not here to do what I believe. If I thought about what my ideology was and what I wanted to happen, I might decide differently on some things. But if my community is reaching out to me and telling me, this is what I want, this is what I want to see happen, I think this is a great idea. I think that we could use our tax dollars that we're all paying into to support this idea of this program. I have to at least listen and try to figure out a way to make it happen. In the same way that we did during our, our budget meeting, we heard from constituents that wanted to do additional. And so we went through the exercise of trying to figure out, how can we do that? Now, ultimately, we weren't able to. But I want to just make sure that as we have these conversations about charter schools, that we're having a conversation that's rooted in what the community is asking us to do and how can we partner with them to make these opportunities real for a group of kids that I think we do know in reality, those kids are out there that could use this additional support. That's why we tried to do all of the things that we do currently in our district. So I know I have some other colleagues that want to say something, but I appreciate y'all listening.
I'm going with Member Block and then go to Fain and Elrod.
I want to say I appreciate the, both the comments that you made, Board Member Taylor, and also the manner in which you made them, which I, I think is very reasonable. And also reminds me that when I, when I ran for this seat and also consistently within these conversations, this is the most split my district is. About half the folks in my district think that, and, and exercise the ability to make choice in multiple ways. One, they exercise the ability to make choice with where they choose to buy a home. That happens, so we need to recognize that that is a choice that folks do make. Secondly, folks in my district, at a higher percentage than in a lot of other places, choose to send their children to private school. And third, folks in my district choose to send their school, children to lots of different schools in MNPS. And so a lot of those folks tend to be very in favor of various types of choice, some of which I agree with, some of which I don't, some of which I won't do, but they have every right to make that choice because every kid is different. Every kid has a different need. But that is one set of folks. And then there's another set of folks who say to me, but when you choose to approve something that is different within the school district, then that does, and I think Board Member Elrod made this point, I think this is, this is a valid point, which is students don't leave schools in chunks. They don't leave schools in classrooms, they don't leave schools, they leave schools one at a time. And that is an adjustment that has to be made for. And it does impact our budget. And it is the responsibility of the board member, in my belief, and I've come to this conclusion much more stringently, more, more recently, which is my obligation, yes, is to each individual child and providing the best education we could possibly provide for that child and letting them figure out where that is for them. But it is also to the district as a whole, because if my obligation is not to the district as a whole and to the budget of the district as a whole and to our educators and to these other folks, then I am causing an issue for each individual child. And so I end up very much in the same position as my constituents, which is about 50% of me thinks, gosh, it's so great that we offer choice and people can figure out what they want to do, and, and this is an interesting option too. And man, I wish we could do that, but boy, that's hard to, now I'm just like rambling, right? But you guys know what I'm saying. And then the other half of me goes, man, if I don't think about each and every dollar that we're spending and allocating the way we did talk in our budget meeting, then I'm doing a disservice to every single child in this district. And that makes this process impossible. And so if I am saying no, it is because I don't, I, I don't believe this is in the best interest of the entire district. There are, I am confident, there are children who benefit from every single public education, private education opportunity that is offered to them. My obligation is to make sure that for this school district, of which I am a board member, I am sure that we are providing the best options we can. And I'm gonna push on that at every meeting with every single thing that we're talking about. I do understand the point that also the budget and the money that comes is broadly the communities. But I, I think we are put in an impossible position of having to make a decision as people whose responsibility it is to the students and schools of the district to then figure out, oh yeah, no, let's take some of that money and put it somewhere else. And, and I just want to say that, I just think it's impossible. That's all. And I've never said it exactly like that, but that is how I feel. And frankly, it's how my constituents feel too. So, that is all.
All right, uh, Member Fain, and then we'll go to Member Nabala Kenny, she's had a spoke, and then Member Elrod.
Thank you. Robert, Board Member Taylor, I think you made some really, really valid points, and I'm gonna piggyback off a few of them. This is, the Rock Academy will be in District Five, because that's in the downtown district. I would be highly interested in, we have the data that was provided and that is public, but even if I had the opportunity to sit down with someone at the Rock and kind of talk and want to know, have you worked with anyone in our juvenile system? Like, have you talked to our community achieve partners in that district? And are there any particular schools or neighborhoods that you are targeting? And, and how that interaction is? Because I do believe in, I think even you did say that, Board Member Taylor, a few meetings ago, it takes a village, right? So this is our community, we are hearing from them as well as the parents in the concern. And I live in North Nashville, so I'm very aware of the concern in those kids. My child went to Pearl, that's how I got in this seat, by getting in the community and doing the work with the community and interacting from a corporate level and a community level. So I know that it takes all rims. My biggest concern is the budget, like Board Member Block just spoke on. But also, like, have there been any type of partnership in the past that didn't work? Have we tried that angle with partnering with MNPS and offering a program? Working with, like I said, our, our Metro Police members and other, other members? Like, has there been anything that's discussed? I think that NOAA does a good job with trying to partner with different organizations and bringing everybody in and seeing how they can assist or help MNPS. And then from there, we can develop other programs or, or, or we can grow what, one that we already have. That is always, I, I'm super big on choice and, and having the option to do what you feel is best for your child. But at the same time, like you just said, Board Member Block, we have to think about all kids in the school system. And as hard as this budget was this year and how we had to sit down and trickle it down to, to the last cent on, on the, on the dollar, we just don't have that budget to, 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 to give to every big bright idea that we think is great. I, I, I'm a data person, you're a data person, I, I'd like to see the numbers. And, and I'm like, if we could maybe start like a pilot program and see how that works and then grow from there, I just always like, oh, we're gonna go straight into a school? Like, I, I don't know, it's just, it's a, it's a, it's a lot of responsibility, it's a lot of money, it's a lot of things that I don't think often is the answer for a program. It's, it's, it sounds like a great program, I am very interested in partnering and working with you all. Granted, if, you know, you are approved by the state still, I am still open and, and, and willing to work with you and see how we can, how we can, can get this done. But it's just very hard for me to vote yes, giving all of, like I said, the data and the metrics and looking at the numbers. And that's what I had to say. Thank you.
Vice Chair Nabala Kenny?
Thank, thank you all for your sentiment and your, your transparent thoughts on this conversation. I, I need to take a step back. When I joined the board back in 2022, originally in 2020, took a break, there was a conversation about specifically working with the demographics that we're talking about now. I believe at the time, it was Board Member Gentry that really talked about how we needed to change and improve the way in which we did alternative learning to support those specific at-risk students. And, and, and it was a charge given to Dr. Battle at the time to make that happen. And I, I would just be remiss in listening to these conversations and not acknowledging the work that has happened in our district around alternative education, specifically at both Johnson and the other alternative learning school around that. Myron Franklin has, which we heard today, has done some amazing work specifically with our at-risk students that, that, that fall into the ALC. And the restorative and re-entry work that he has done, I have heard phenomenal feedback from principals, from students who have gone through the ALC and returned back to their neighborhood high school, their zone high school, and the work that's happening there. As a matter of fact, last year, Myron Franklin, the Johnson ALC, received a national recognition. And he's on the board for the National Alternative Education Association. And so the work that is happening in our district currently, I, I just, I just want to make sure that we are also acknowledging that phenomenal work. The first question that I had when I heard about the Rock Academy is, did they talk to anybody within MNPS before they started a charter application? And the question was no. The answer was no. No conversation was had. I asked that question every, to Dr. Battle, every single time a charter application comes through this district. Has there been a conversation? Is there something that's happening that we haven't tried to fix or that, that, that? Like, what's happening here? Where are we missing that model? And there, there hasn't been a conversation, but we come in with these ideas. And, 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 and I will add, it is not a new idea. This is not transformational. This is already happening within our district. We're already doing the work within our district with these particular group of students. And we are seeing success in the model that is happening and the work that are hap, that is being done by the people who are in charge of these schools to make it happen. And so how do we build on it? How do we do all of that? That is the question that we, we need to have to continue to build capacity. When we look at the budget, we had a excruciating budget conversation over this last month about nickel and diming our budget. In approving a charter school over a nickel and dimed budget, knowing that this model requires a lot of funding for the group of students that we are looking to serve, and we know that there are gaps in that funding, we are setting that school up and ourselves up for failure. And the students and their families. So if we're having a realistic conversation, let's have a realistic conversation about how that school will be set up from failure from the beginning. I can't control what happens at the State Charter Commission, they have their own agenda and their own politics about what's happening. I am here to make sure that every student in our district, wherever they are, are set up for success. And if we approve this- And if we approve this, given the deficiencies that are in this application and the challenges that we are having, I read an article where the, the, the founder of this school acknowledged the challenges in recruitment, in funding, in all of those things. And we are contemplating and debating, we're setting families up for success, for failure. By giving, sorry, not for, sorry, for failure. No, serious, not for success. But we're setting them up for failure, giving them the false hope that this is gonna be okay. Knowing that we have the information on the challenges, the challenges are public, that is public information, it is transparent. And so for me, that's where I sit on this. If it, I have a responsibility to make sure that we are, are, are taking care of students and we're setting them on a trajectory of success. And every time that I sit and talk to Dr. Battle and hold her accountable for moving the needle on academic outcomes and then vote to take money away from her doing her job, I'm setting her up for failure, too. So on that note, sorry I got passionate on this, because I think, I'm sorry, but when it comes to kids, that is just something that I, I, I can't move forward and give this false idea, false notion to parents and to the community that this is gonna be on a trajectory of success, and it's not. It's, 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 it's set up to fail from the beginning. And so I'm sorry. On that note, I will, I will vote to say, uh, to not approve.
Member Elrod?
Thank you. I appreciate the vol, I appreciate the vulnerability of the Director of The Rock stating that it was gonna take a lot of money and energy and expertise to pull this off. I think that's vulnerable leadership, and I try to do the same. So in that same spirit, I say, I appreciate that. And that is, again, why I am so concerned at the lack of preparation. Again, no amount of enthusiasm or passion is going to make up for the lack of experience or expertise inside of a school, particularly when you have a large at-risk population that deserves and needs and requires the most interventions and the most, um, investments. That said, our responsibility is to students, but our responsibility is to also the district. Each one of us has a responsibility, not only to our individual districts, like I do at District Two, but also to MNPS. Our goal is to do the most good. And admittedly, like Doc, like, um, I just made you a doctor, Ms. O'Hara Block said, it's impossible at times, we're choosing the least bad out of bad options sometimes. But that is what we have to do. And that does mean that we have to also listen to our constituents. And there are passionate constituents, whether here or in our email box or otherwise. But we've also had passionate constituents in other ways as well. And we cannot always do what we're being asked to do, because it's simply not possible. It doesn't make sense for the most good. It doesn't make sense for the district. I will never, ever make a decision based upon what I think the state is going to do. And if any of my colleagues think that making that type of decision based upon what the state's gonna do, you shouldn't be on the board, you should run for the state. Do not make decisions based on what the state is gonna do. The state does not get to take our power or our responsibilities. Sure, they make decisions for us, and a lot of times we don't care for them. But I will say to you that we don't make decisions based upon the state. We make decisions based upon what is best for our district. And we have a lot of responsibilities. So I am glad that people have said what they need to say, that they have been here, that they're advocating for students that they really feel are not being met. Those students deserve that voice, and I'm glad they have a voice. They are lucky to have you. I would so encourage you to keep using that voice. I am telling you, in the spirit of Dr. Prithena Nabak McKinnney, Myron, uh, Mr. Franklin, excuse me, at Johnson, he's not even a school in my district, but that gentleman is so passionate about the work that he truly feels called to do. If there is anyone that, I mean, if there is any principal that'd be like, is open to partnership, it is that gentleman at Johnson. But I will say to you again, our responsibility is to the district as a whole. We are to do what is best for all of our constituents as best as we can. And there's never an easy or clear option, and it is impossible. And we know that from so many experiences, including just today. Our constituents, our staff, were coming to us, asking us for an extra 1% cola. And that seems so insignificant, because you're like, it's 1%. We can find 1%. And we're up here trying to find 1% four weeks, days, so many after-hour times spent trying to find 1%, which is about $7 million for that additional cola. And we couldn't find it without hurting other programs. And that's the same situation here. As example, it'd be 5.9 million annually. And I don't like to say that everything comes down to money, but in the end, we can't have any innovation. We can't do the work if we can't fund it, if we can't support it. And so that innovation is needed, but we also have to have it. So I, again, want to say, we have to listen to our constituents. I'm so glad that you have been here. Again, your passion has been impressive, and I appreciate the vulnerability. But we have to also balance what is best for a few students, though very important students, with the balance of the rest of what we need to do. And then take that feedback to implement new changes that need to be done. What are we learning from this? What do we need to do? What can we already implement? What do we already implement currently, but we just don't advertise it well? People don't know about it, so they, those parents don't even know that that's available to them, or those students don't. Whatever the issue might be. Again, transparency, I appreciate you letting me speak a second time. I'm usually the only one that speaks. So I know that a lot of times people think that I have my mind already made up. And it is typically based upon, again, are these seats needed? And what is the best choice for the entire district? And in this case, that is the choice. Also, it cannot be underestimated or under explained that within the information, there's a lot of missing pieces still for the academic, operational, and financial capacity. They're not prepared to take on this awesome, awesome thing that they're trying to take on. They might have the passion, they might have the interest. They might be called to do it, but it's not right now. The money doesn't exist for them. They don't have the academics in line to do the right thing for those students and families. And they can't be operational enough to make the biggest impact that they think they're trying to make. And I don't want to hurt those students any further.
Member, uh, Taylor?
Got a couple more comments. I don't even know where to start. I'm gonna start with, uh, experience. We talked a little bit about, um, them not necessarily having experience. I know Dr. White, and he has tons of experience doing his type of work specifically, as well as, um, most recently, operating the first charter school in Nashville, Smithson Craighead, which was developed under the true purpose of what I believe charter schools were intended to be. And because of his experience at that particular charter school, I know that he understands the enormous role that, uh, that he is looking to undertake in starting a school that works with these specific children. I know we also talked about the financial piece of it, um, and how students may trickle out of our schools. The population that they are looking to serve is not coming to our schools. That's, that's the, the issue. They are looking to serve children who are chronically truant, who we are not meeting their needs on a consistent basis. We are making very great strides in that direction, but for a certain number of students, it is not reaching them. And that's what these parents are telling us. They're saying, it's not reaching them. Now, maybe I'm a little bit more sensitive, because I, I do feel like, and, you know, of course, I don't have data to back this one up, but I do feel like a large majority of the students that they're trying to serve live in my district versus some of the other districts that, uh, that are represented here. And, yeah, and so I just, I see it. When I go to my Kroger on Clarksville Highway and I see kids during the middle of the day, and I'm probably supposed to be at work, too, but they're there in the middle of the day, asking me for money to get some food out of the subway over there. Why aren't they in school? Where are they supposed to be in school? Why is nobody even looking for these kids? And then ultimately, they get involved with our juvenile justice system, right? And that affects my community. It affects the housing value around there, all of these issues, right? And so it goes back. Yes, there is a financial piece to this. I don't think anybody is trying to take any more money away. But we've had the discussion about where the money is at. The money is at the state, right? And so I know I mentioned that the state may approve these or not. It's not that I'm making a decision based on what the state may or may not do. I'm being real and transparent, right? And the state wrote legislation for this specific charter school. There is legislation that says that charter schools can be approved for this specific population. So hopefully, now that they have some legislation written, they'll fund it, right? Now they're not. Hey, there's a lot of what else in what we're doing, right? And so I want to make sure that as we continue to have these conversations, I don't know what the vote is gonna be today. But as we're having these conversations about charter schools, let's be realistic about what the opportunities are for us to partner with these folks. Yes, they could do some things in our, our schools. I know Mr. Franklin, I've been out to Johnson a ton of times. Now, by ton, I mean four. But I've done the podcast with them, all of those things, right? And so I know the amazing work that they're doing there. I know the amazing work that we're doing in our other schools in our district. You can't, you can't ask me questions at the same time, Board Member Fane, I'm sorry. I don't know what the conversations have been. What I do know is that you got somebody who's led a charter school in our district before. They've been successful in doing their work. They know the population that they're trying to serve. The application, every application that comes through, seems like there's some deficiencies, right? But charter schools still operate in our district. Some of them do better than others. I don't think that we're setting people up for failure if they've been successful in the past doing the work. And so I, I just want to push back on that a little bit. What I do think is by pretending as though we're going to be able to serve every single child out of 100,000 kids in this city, we got about 100,000 kids in the city, we serve about 80-some thousand of them now, right? If we think that we're gonna serve every single one of those kids and provide them exactly with what they need, that is the impossible task. I think when we talk about what's impossible, so we gotta figure this out. I don't know what the solution looks like, but I'm willing to work on it. And I appreciate everything that you all are doing. I appreciate Dr. Battle, I appreciate her team. I don't want this to be seen as, you know, we're bashing each other or whatever. But I also appreciate these people that have come in support of their kids and their community. And, uh, and I just want us to figure it out and figure out a way to work together a little bit better. That's all I got.
Dr. Dr. Battle?
Yeah, I just want to, um, lift the, um, application process, because I just can't let people be confused about that. Because what we do have are educational experts, um, who are taking not just hours, but days, digging into this, these applications. And so it's important for me, because we have dedicated folks who spend a lot of time digging into this, um, that we know that their expertise is valued. They have been with us for the long haul, not in and out. They've been here serving, um, the students of our community, um, for a long time. And so I'd be remiss if I didn't take an opportunity to thank them for their tireless leadership, for their commitment, for lending their expertise to a process that they don't have to, um, to make sure that we have quality educational experiences in our portfolio of schools here in Nashville Public Schools. So, um, that's important, because it is pretty deflating, um, when you hear, um, a conversation that doesn't acknowledge the amount of time and expertise they truly bring to the table. We have educators who, you match them up against anybody anywhere in this country, and they will show you how to get it done for children. And so that's important, that through this process, that we continue to uplift and value the work that they bring, um, to the table. Um, again, thank you to the team who has dedicated so much time, um, and energy. You committed days at a time, particularly this last round, trying to provide quality feedback, um, really advocating for not only, not just meeting, but meeting and exceeding, um, the expectations for the children here in Nashville. Thank you.
Member Mies?
Thank you, Chair. So I'm, I've been listening to this roundtable of conversations, and, um, what has stood out with every conversation is, um, where we are in this landscape right now. I have a real concern with, um, supporting deficiencies and expecting great outcomes. A real concern with that. That's where we are in this world right now. We supported deficiencies, and now we are where we are. My concern, and I will say this, I absolutely took on this role because I have a passion and a love for every single one of these children, every single one of them. And I want nothing but the best for them at all times. And get, having that, having said that, the best may look like not approving a, a particular school like this because of the deficiencies that have already been presented to us twice now. I'm concerned that, um, we have known deficiencies that are right here. And, um, you know, there was some conversation about the short turnaround in application process, and that is, um, we are, we have fallen well within that, that range to turn the amended applications around. I, I just keep going back to the what-if scenarios, you know? What if this works? What if it doesn't work? But my bigger concern is, what is it going to do, the long-term impact on our students? You know, because we're already talking about, uh, students that are at risk, that we are trying to make sure they have a path forward in some capacity. What happens if we walk down that path of saying, well, we'll ignore the deficiencies that are in the application and go ahead and approve the application, and then we fail our children? You know, we don't know that this is 100% guaranteed, we don't know that. If there was some sort of magic wand that would say that approving this application would 100% guarantee that those students are going to, all their, all their issues are gonna magically disappear, because they're gonna be in a specis, uh, in this position to where they can be, uh, successful academically, that's great. But I think, uh, you know, uh, Board Member Taylor, uh, sort of alluded to the fact that we have kids that are not going to school right now. Uh, what is the guarantee that even with the program like this, that they are going to go to school and stay in school? Now, my concern is, as I said before, if we have an application that right now shows a level of deficiencies for academic success, why would we consider approving that application? Uh, what are we saying to our students? We are going to approve this application that is, uh, that we already know is not meeting the standards. But, you know, suck it up and live with it, you'll be all right. Get it right, do what you need to do. I absolutely adore being a part of this Board of Education, because I get to advocate for students and families every single day. But what I don't, uh, adore is situations like this where it feels like that- But what I don't, uh, adore is situations like this where it feels like that we are, leaving our children out in the cold for some reason. So I guess, you know, and I've got a lot of thoughts happening in my head right now, and I'm, I've got a lot of sugar in my head right now, so there's a lot of things going on, but, um, I'm just concerned that, uh, if we are considering approving an application that is already, to Dr. Battle's point, has been reviewed for quite some time, uh, very thoroughly by the, uh, charter, the charter, uh, school team. And they have, uh, noted, based on, um, the guidelines and criteria that have been provided to them by the State Board of Education. You know, what are we considering here? What are we seriously considering? We are following the criteria as it has been laid out, and we know that this, um, application has a lot of deficiencies. Why would we consider putting our children in a situation where the, they could, uh, potentially fail? If we already have students that are, that we are trying to reach, and to Board Member Fane's, uh, point, let's have that conversation. Even if this application does not get approved tonight, let's have that conversation about how we could work together to make sure that all of our babies are being taken care of. There's no harm in that. And, um, I don't want us to, I don't want anybody to walk away thinking that, oh, that Board of Education, they never approve anything. No, actually, we do. We make sure that our babies are taken care of, that's what, that's the job that we have right here. We are doing whatever we can to make sure that we are supporting, uh, our children to the best of our ability and whatever that looks like, and I make no apology for making sure that I support all of these children, they're all my babies. So that was kind of a ramble, but I think you get the point. Thank you.
Are there any last comments? Member Elrod would be the last comment?
I was just gonna say that if you wanna know who was on the reviewers team, it's on page 160 because there's been a request for transparency, so it's on page 160. Lastly, I wanna make sure, because I don't think it came out very well, that I appreciate the amount of conversation and debate that we are having today. Historically with charter schools, I feel like I'm the only one talking. And so I really appreciate the debate, I think it's necessary for not only our public, but for us, it is required of us as a debate. I really appreciate, um, Member Tyler, Taylor, sorry, we have two of them now, Mr. Taylor, uh, sharing his perspective, particularly because it's within his district that he's discussed the most. Um, and that's where, as Dr. Prithena Nabak McKinnney mentioned, Dr. Gentry came from, uh, the pass board member for that district and had such a passion for doing some of this other work. So I think that's a great continuation and necessary to the conversation, and I appreciate it. I really think that us having these, uh, robust discussions is the most respectful thing we can do for not only charter schools that have given us the time and request to apply, but also to the state to provide that additional context and information, because we have to do that, but also to our constituents because of transparency, and to each other so that we understand kind of what the concerns are, to kind of push the ball forward, and to inform our strategic planning. So I really appreciate this conversation. I appreciate that we're all trying to push the ball, the ball forward, I think I said bull before, and I apologize for that. Um, I also wanna say that my comment about voting with the state is not based upon anyone at this board. We have had that situation in the past, and I apologize that I might have gotten it a little too energetic. But in the past, we've had that issue with some past situations of trying to just do what the state wants to do, and that's always been a concern for me going forward as well. But I know that that's not the desire of anyone here. So I appreciate that everyone's been here, I think the conversation's been really well done, and again, I appreciate the good and robust debate.
Thank you. Seeing that there's no further comments, we will move to a vote. There's been a motion to deny, um, by Member Fane, second by Vice Member, by Vice Chair Nabak McKinnney. All in favor, say aye. Any oppose? Two. So the vote's eight, no, seven to two. The motion, the motion passes, seven to two. Thank you. Thank you, uh, Dr. Roby Grant. We will now move, uh, into board reports. There will be no, um, school, there will be no school board meeting on July 8th, um, after the Fourth of July holiday to give our time, our staff and our time, um, for vacation before start of the new year. So July 8th, there would be no school board meeting, and then I will like to, um, end the meeting or give Member Young, um, a statement next to read.
Thank you, Chair, and, uh, thanks for the point of privilege here at the end of the meeting. Back on April 27th, 2021, the MNPS Board of Education unanimously passed a resolution affirming our commitment to the physical, mental, and emotional support of all our students, staff, parents, and stakeholders regardless of gender identity, gender expression, or sexual orientation. And given that it's Pride Month, and especially in light of the uncertain, and quite frankly, hostile landscape that we face under the current federal administration, I felt it was important to take a moment to reaffirm this board's commitment, and not only to the principle that every student is known, but that every employee is known as well. And while the composition of this board has shifted slightly since that resolution passed four years ago, I am confident that this board, at this moment, and our district leadership remain just as committed to supporting our LGBTQ students, families, and staff. When I first considered running for this seat, I was hesitant. I wasn't sure if this was the right place for my voice or perspective. And at that time, I didn't even realize that no openly queer person had ever been elected to a school board anywhere in Tennessee, let alone Nashville. But after conversations with friends, it became clear that this was exactly where I needed to be. And what I didn't realize then was that serving at this moment in time would mean serving at a time when so much of the progress we fought for is being threatened. Just last month, far-right websites and the local GOP targeted and harassed a distinguished MNPS teacher, someone who was also a beloved local drag performer. I'm proud, though not at all surprised, to report that this teacher confirmed to me that MNPS and all their administrators have stirred, stood firmly by them and offered them unwavering support. This isn't the first time our community has faced attacks, and we are stronger than any bigot or presidential administration. It can be, it can be hard to find joy right now, but we cannot let them take our joy away. And so I wanna close with a quote, uh, that I've shared with some of y'all before from activist Dan Savage, that I keep repeating to myself a lot lately. And it's, "During the darkest days of the AIDS crisis, we buried our friends in the morning, we protested in the afternoon, and we danced all night. The dance kept us in the fight because it was the dance we were fighting for." So happy Pride to all of our students, staff, families, and to all of you. And thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And, um, we're proud to have you on our board, and proud we're serving, and proud for that voice that you have. So be no further business, um, this meeting's adjourned.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.